Hey Bill.
Hey Jim, is that you? Are you a Zoom user?
What did I not do it right?
Your name popped up now. Do you have video tonight or no?
I think so. I mean, I can see a portrait of you. I can see Bill.
Yeah, I think your camera might be off, but you can see us.
Yeah, how I turn my camera on?
Should be right in the bottom left. It says start video. There's a red line through it.
At the left of the door with the light switches?
There you go. Now we can see you.
Okay.
Is that handsome fella?
Hey, listen, I've told you all before. I gotta log on 20 minutes before the meeting because it takes me that long to figure out how to work it.
Kevin, I like your new profile picture. Looks like professionally done.
Oh, yeah. Thanks.
Good job. Should I, uh, 6:30? Should I get going or wait one more minute?
I have 6:30, Mr. Chair. I think we're ready to get started.
Vice Chair, not Mr. Chair. All right. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the order. The April 16th, 2024 Rentham Select Board Meeting. In accordance with Chapter 2 of the Acts of 2023, this public meeting of the Select Board shall be conducted remotely via Zoom. The agenda is posted on the town's website and it identifies how the public may join. Please note this meeting is being recorded as a preliminary matter. This is Select Board Vice Chair Chris Gallo. Permit me to confirm that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present. Can you hear me? Members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Selectman Anderson.
Anderson here.
Selectman Harrington.
Harrington here.
Selectwoman Rouse.
Rouse here.
Great staff. When I call your name, please also respond in the affirmative. Town Manager Kevin Sweet.
Present.
Assistant Town Manager Greg Enos.
Present.
Executive Assistant Amanda Vazapolo.
Present.
I also see, I don't want to miss anyone. I also see we have our Town Planner Rachel Benson. Welcome to the meeting, Rachel. It's always good to see you and members of the public. Okay. Getting running to the meeting. I'm going to start with tab one. I would ask the Clerk Selectman Harrington to please read our announcements.
Yes, Mr. Chair. Let me just get them opened up.
Take your time. And while Selectman Harrington's do that, I just want to make a note that our Chairman Selectman Botash is visibly not at tonight's meeting. If he's watching, and it wouldn't surprise me if he is, or later on when he sees the recording, I want him to know how much we all love him and miss him. And can't wait to get him back on running this meeting in the very near future. Because selfishly, I do not love running these meetings. So with that being said, if you're ready, Selectman Harrington, please read the note.
Well said. Announcements. Real estate and personal property taxes due May 1st, 2024. Rentham Department of Public Works is hosting an unwanted household item drop-off on May 4th, 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM, the Senior Center Parking Lot. For a complete list of acceptable items, see the town website. Keep Rentham Beautiful Day will be held on April 27th, 2024 from 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM. Bags may be picked up and dropped off at the Senior Center. Spring hydrant flushing is being conducted by the Water Department for five weeks starting April 7th. Customers are advised that a drop in pressure and some discoloration of water may occur while flushing is in progress. If this occurs, you should wait until we out of the area and run your cold water for several minutes and it should clear up. We appreciate your patience and cooperation. Any questions should be directed to the Public Works Department at 508-384-5477. National DEA Medication Take Back Day is taking place April 27th from 9:00 AM to 12:00 PM at Rentham Public Safety Building behind 79 South Street. Town Hall. Items are accepted: tablets, pills, lotions, patches, liquids. This drive-in and drop-off event is cosponsored by the Town of Rentham and Safe Coalition. Rentham Youth Baseball Softball Association Open Day celebrations. On Saturday, April 20th, 24, the parade will kick off opening day celebrations starting at Center Parking Lot at 10:00 AM. Proceeding down 1A towards Sweat Complex, down Randall Road, and concluding at the McMorrow Fields. Annual Town Meeting is on June 3rd, 2024 at the King Philip High School, starting at 7:00 PM. That's it, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Selectman Harrington. At this time, we're going to go to tab two, Approval of the Minutes. At this time, the Vice Chair would entertain a motion to approve the open session meeting minutes from April 2nd to 2024.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Selectman Harrington, second made by Selectman Anderson. Assume and note any further discussion, seeing as none. I'll entertain a roll call vote. Hold on one second. Let me get my list out so I don't mess this up. Selectman Anderson.
Anderson's a yes.
Selectman Harrington.
Harrington's a yes.
Selectwoman Rouse.
Rouse is yes.
And Chris Gallo's a yes. Motion passes 4-0. Okay. Next item on the agenda. It looks like we had a public hearing scheduled, but that public hearing has then been withdrawn. So we'll go to new business. It looks like we also had an interview for the zoning board of appeals, but it looks like that application has also been withdrawn. So I'm assuming there's nothing we have to do there, Kevin. We can just move on?
That's correct.
Okay. The next item on the agenda is we're going to vote to, we are going to vote to approve the 2024 Junk/Antique License Renewals. The following are eligible for renewal and are in good standing with all applicable departments. They are as follows: East Street Antiques, 242 East Street, Fails House Antiques, 3 to 4A East Street, and my grandmother had that, 446 South Street. I guess we're going to be, I'm going to be looking for a motion to approve the 2024 Junk/Antique License Renewals as provided and authorize the use of electronic signatures.
So moved.
Had a motion made by Selectwoman Rouse, a second by Selectman Harrington. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll take a roll call vote. Selectman Anderson.
Anderson's a yes.
Selectman Harrington.
Harrington, yes.
Selectwoman Rouse.
Rouse, yes.
And Gallo's a yes. Motion carries 4-0. Okay. Next item of business. It looks like we're going to do the special one-day license application for Forty Second Parallel Brewing Company. We have a special one-day license application. Says no comments or concerns or stipulations from the applicable departments. Previously licensed at this location have been issued under the following conditions. Parking plan to include no left turn on Route 1A, 1, or Route 1, I'm sorry, sorry. Route 1A, comma, 1 to 2 police detail, directing traffic and assisting pedestrians crossing, and applicant coordinate with the area property owners for additional parking. It looks like we should have with us, if I'm not mistaken, Jonathan and/or Jess Laiakono.
Sorry. Steve Larkin here, co-owner with John. John had a sporting event that he had to go to and I'm as well on the lacrosse field with my son, so I'm here representing, representing us.
Okay, great. Just give us, just give us a quick summary and then I'll open it up to the board, see if they have any further questions or concerns before we take a vote.
Yeah, fantastic. Thank you. Last year, we had three great events last year at the White Barn Farm, and we are partnering with them again to host a run. I believe Amanda from the farm is here, and she can give a little bit more detail as to what the event is all about. We're just pulling the liquor license.
Hi all, it's Angela from White Barn. Hi.
Angela.
Hi. Yes, so on the 27th is our Radish Rambler 5K, second annual. Then Earth Fest is our annual Earth Day event, and that's following. And that's where we're looking to have the beer garden in the Earth Fest event from 10 to 4. And it's very similar to a lot of our other events, where we have games for the kids and activities, and we have a group that goes out and picks up trash because the farm abuts that conservation land and trout pond area, and that's kind of the event in a nutshell. I just wanted to raise the question for the left turn only stipulation that happened at one of the previous events. I think that I think that where the, the last police detail officer who was there had actually mentioned that it was a little bit hard to manage for people, and his thoughts, I believe, were where if an event were on a Saturday, as opposed to like a Thursday evening, I do believe that our first beer gardens were Thursday, were Friday evenings, where traffic was extremely heavy with the rush hour. So I guess I would love to just kind of ask that question for a Saturday event, if that would still be a requirement, just so we know, and then with the two police detail requirement as well.
Are you questioning the, are you asking if we need two police officers, or you're saying because we have two police officers, do we need the route one, I'm sorry, the no-left turn designation?
Sure, it's wondering if we need the two police officers. That was the same day where the officer said, I think that having two is maybe a little bit redundant, where we had the one entrance in and out. I don't know. I can give more info to or ask better.
I'm gonna ask Town Manager Kevin Sweet to weigh in on that before I open it up to the board members.
Yeah, Mr. Vice Chair, I would recommend if the board's inclined to approve the license that they deflect any detail officer requirements and traffic restrictions to the Chief of Police. We've done that for prior approvals, and I think each of these events kind of have necessitated a review, looking at the potential volume turnout. So I would, if the board's inclined to approve it, to vote it contingent upon any requirements stipulated by the Chief of Police, that way they can work out a formalized kind of traffic plan and what the right number is, rather than put that on the board.
Okay, I'm gonna open it up to the board members and ask if they have any questions, and if they're okay with what Kevin just suggested, that we let the Chief of Police and/or fire weigh in as needed and develop the plan. I'm gonna start with Selectman Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. Yeah, so I would agree hundred percent with Kevin that, you know, we should leave up the details, how many, the left-hand turn, to the Chief of Police. He's more qualified to determine whether or not they need the two or not, and whether or not traffic. I know in the past, the feedback I've received is that, you know, that is a special event at the White Barn Farm. I think the only thing that is really been a negative has been the traffic, and I think we'll minimize that to a certain extent. So I would be in favor of approving this, but leaving it up to the discretion of the Chief of Police on details and the traffic pattern.
Okay, thank you, Selectman Anderson. Selectman Harrington, what are your thoughts?
Yeah, just two, two questions, I guess. Is it customary that we issue the liquor license to the brewery or to the farm? And does that, is it the farm that's requesting it? I'm a little confused there, because isn't there like a a total amount that they can have for a year? And then by utilizing the brewery for one, and then the farm for others, that seems a little gray to me. That's my first question. And then second, I'm curious if they had a question on the parking and the left turn and the police, why wasn't it asked prior to tonight's meeting so that we could have a complete and accurate decision, rather than having it, again, filled out incorrectly or requested and not followed through prior? We're making a decision again, and we don't have all the information that we should have. If there was a question that they should have been asked prior to the meeting, so that it could have been written correctly, as opposed to making a decision with a contingency.
I'll, I'm gonna let Kevin Sweet start by answering what he knows, and then if Angela wants to, you know, chime in and answer as well, completely.
Yeah, I believe, I believe the request was circulated to all department heads accordingly, and we didn't receive any, any further comments back from Public Safety, specific. Amanda, is that accurate?
That is accurate. We did not receive any comments back from them, like it's on your cover sheet. There have been different stipulations that the board has provided on there. I'm looking for the letter that we sent White Barn Farm right now, the last time, to both Forty-Second Parallel and the farm that listed out kind of the stipulations for having large events at it, and you guys could just defer back to that action, if you so chose to.
And there was another question about the licensing, who are we giving the licenses to? I want to make sure that gets answered as well.
Yeah, the license is being issued to the brewing company.
Oh, that's, Kevin, is that standard? That the brewing company gets it this time, and then for another event, the farm gets it?
Yeah, if the brewing company is the one providing the service, and, you know, the actual, as opposed to just the the product, they're the ones that are actually providing the service. That's, that is standard, that they're the ones that issue the license itself.
So when we issue a one-day license, it's to the brewer, not to the farm?
If, if, is the brewing company in this case doing on the on-premise service? Or just, yeah, so that's common. So like in other ones, for instance, like James's Roadside, things like that, they're actually providing, you know, they're getting it from a authorized distributor or piece for that one day, but they're tips trained, and they're doing the service, so it's issued to the one that is actually providing the service. Yeah. Which I believe is the case. Angela could probably correct me if that, I believe that is the case for this particular event.
Yes, it is.
Okay. Are you satisfied, Selectman Harrington, with that response?
Other than that, you know, if this was the way it was presented, and the information is there with regards to the parking and the police details, if it was circulated throughout the public safety, I don't, I don't see why we're changing it. If they had, if they didn't want to have it, then they could have changed it prior to the meeting. I don't know why we're changing it. And again, not having an accurate decision with no stipulations.
I think, I don't want to speak for them, Selectman Harrington, but my understanding is, I think the broader the broader response is, we want to let Chief McGrath make these decisions and not us, but I do understand your point. But that's why maybe it wasn't, you know, I, 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 I don't want to answer for anyone, but I do think that he's much more qualified than I am to make those decisions, so I'm happy to approve the license pending his input, if that's the, you know, that's the will of the rest of the board members as well.
Right, but he's, this was already circulated.
Yeah, the
Kevin, am I wrong?
Yeah, the information that's on the cover sheet was from the prior just notes that we had, not direct from the chief this time. That's why I'm recommending that he reconsider the prior event, which with it being a weekday, in a different time of day, different operation. That was kind of what he had stipulated for that event, but we didn't receive any feedback, comments back specific to Saturday and this particular event. That's why I think it's prudent to leave it to the discretion of, you know, the Chief of Police, what is, what is required, as this is a little bit of a different change. So the information that you have is, is not directly from Public Safety or from the chief. That's from the prior event.
Okay, point taken. Thank you.
So it's not like he, it's not like McGrath made a comment saying, I want to keep it with two cops and left turn. He just didn't necessarily comment on this current situation, hence us giving him the authorization to make the decision.
That's correct.
Understood. Thank you.
All right, moving on. Selectwoman Rouse. Any comments, and are you okay with that stipulation?
Yes, I'm okay with that stipulation, Mr. Vice Chair. I would like to recommend, since we're coming up into the season, where White Barn tends to have a lot of events, either on weekday or weekend, that we hear from Police Chief McGrath on how, what he wants for weekday events and what he wants on weekend events, so we don't have to keep going back and forth to him when each of these come up. In addition to that, Angela, I would love to perhaps have you guys map out your summer and fall plans, so perhaps there, you know, we understand what, what events are happening, when they're happening, and the intent behind those. Perhaps so we can get a lot of these questions answered before the meeting, and everyone is, is good to go, and not wondering what we did last time, or last year, or last month, et cetera, because I know we're ramping into that summer and fall busy season.
Yeah, I love both of those suggestions, and we do have our calendar for the summer that we're working on. This event did end up sneaking up on us. But we're actually very prepared in the next couple of weeks to provide the committee with just that and get our approvals for the year.
Okay, so that's great. So, Mr. Vice Chair, I don't know how we make that request to, when we put this forward to Chief McGrath, to see if he can give us direction for weekday events, as well as weekend, on how we want those handled.
Yeah, I think that's a great point, Selectwoman Russ. I think we just ask Kevin to make sure that moving forward, the chief, you know, puts some boilerplate language into these requests that say, if it's a weekday event, this is how we want it. If it's a weekend event, this is how we want it, and then all this goes away.
Correct.
Is that okay, Kevin?
Yes, I think that sounds good. Like we said, Amanda referenced that letter. That letter that was previously submitted to both Forty-Second Parallel, as well as to White Barn Farm back in August of two thousand twenty-three, stipulated those particular, specific to events that happened in the end of August and the end of September, which restricted the, the no-left turn in, which restricted the two officers. We can go back and have the conversation with the chief and ask him to put together a, a plan, because this is a different, a little bit of a different operation as far as the day of the week, which we have not had an opportunity to get him to weigh back in. So I think that's a great, a great recommendation, and we'll take that back.
And I also think that's a great recommendation about the calendar, Selectwoman Russ. Thank you for that. I think it'd just be very helpful for all of us. And I will say this, Angela, this board is always very supportive of White Barn Farm and these events. I know that they, they come very highly esteemed from the community. I've attended a few of these events myself, and they're always very successful. It's a great time. So looking forward to, you know, another successful event, and then looking forward to the proactive schedule that you're gonna share with us, the calendar, and then we'll proactively share with you the stipulations moving forward, so we're a well-rounded machine from this point on. So if there's any other questions or comments from the board, if not, we're gonna ask, I'm gonna ask for the motion, so the Vice Chair would entertain a motion to approve or deny the special one-day license application for Forty-Second Parallel Brewing Company for an event located at four thirty-one South Street on Saturday, April twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-four, from ten AM to four PM.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Yeah, I'll, I'll make that motion, provided that we also put it in there with, with a discussion with Chief McGrath and his discretion as far as details and traffic.
Okay, so do I, Kevin, should I repeat the motion?
We can add that as a friendly amendment, if you're open to that.
Very open, very open. And thank you, Selectman Anderson, for that. So do I get a, that is a motion to approve?
Yes.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Second.
So it looks like a motion made by Selectman Anderson, second made by Selectwoman Rouse. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll take a roll call vote. Selectman Anderson?
Anderson, yes.
Selectman Harrington?
Harrington, yes.
Selectwoman Rouse?
Rouse, yes.
And Chris Gallo, yes. Motion carries four zero. Thank you all so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving right down the agenda, it looks like the next item for discussion is a discussion or update on MBTA Communities, Tab Seven. So at this time, Chair would ask Kevin, do you have an update, before I open it up to the, the board members? Do you have any update for us? I know we're actively pushing forward on that April thirtieth event. I know we may have some updates there that we need to discuss. But I'm turning
Yeah, I don't have anything specific updates at this point from our lot, our, our last meeting. We've continued to put out there the request for any correspondences or input, and continue to monitor that. We haven't seen anything new come in from last meeting related to, related to this topic, and I know we've been working, myself and Amanda and Chair Botash, the last couple of weeks, we're trying to pull together that joint meeting of several, as you indicated, committees, as well as department heads, to have the event for thirtieth of April, and we're still kind of in that finalization plan process, which is really where we're at tonight, to kind of talk about a little bit, but no, no updates with regards to, from my end, with regards to any changes on the MBTA Act, or any real communities that have changed. You know, as far as discussions that I've had, you know, I continue to have those discussions. Some are moving forward, pressing forward with a spring town meeting adoption, others are still kind of unsure where their position will be ultimately. Many seem to be having the discussion of trying to finalize a warrant article to present and see where things play out. But nothing definitive has changed that I have to report.
Okay, great. And I'll just say this too, for anyone listening, we know the, there's just, you know, thousands of people listening to this meeting, and they will in the future, but you know, it's been this board's goal, and it still is, to make sure that we do our job educating our residents, our resident voters, on any and all options with regard to the MBTA Communities. I'm gonna ask the individual board members to chime in in a minute, but as we've said from the get-go, this board's taken the approach that we're taking a multifaceted approach with regard to the zoning. We're asking the planning board to relook at additional parcels, maybe some of the ones that were originally decided that, you know, they didn't make sense at the time. We're asking the planning board to add a couple of new parcels, one of them being the outlets for discussion to the zoning. We're also, you know, investigating, we're, we're, we're asking the residents to present to us if they have any potential parcels that, you know, could be for consideration, as there's a few options that the townspeople have here. The townspeople have, we present this at a future town meeting. The townspeople can either, you know, take the approach that they want to vote in a zoning area where it would be, you know, unlikely or difficult for this project to get built. The townspeople could vote in an area that is, this zoning would be very buildable, but, you know, it would, we, we could present parcels that would be the least potential negative impact on the community, or the townspeople can vote to vote, just vote down this whole zoning requirement from the state. So that's one thing that we're trying to do. We're trying to have this joint meeting with all of the other boards and committees in town and department heads on this tentative date of April thirtieth, so that we can try to start doing fiscal impact analysis to see if we were to zone and build seven hundred and fifty units in our town, what effect that would have on the schools, on public safety, on DPW, roads, you know, our, our infrastructure, our water, what that would look like from an impact perspective, and that is the intent of us trying to have this joint meeting on April thirtieth. We're also seeking legal counsel, because there's a whole nother side to this conversation that hasn't gotten a lot of press, and that is that there's a contingent of people that think that this zoning is, is, is in fact unconstitutional and, and not enforceable. So we're also going down the road of speaking with counsel to see their thoughts on that. So the only reason I bring this up is, I have people coming up to me each and every day, asking me what our Select Board is doing to educate the community on the MBTA community zoning and how it could potentially affect us. That's why I wanted to just take this quick exercise. So with that being said, I'm gonna open it up to the board members to comment and add anything that they feel necessary at this time. I'm gonna start with Selectman Anderson.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. Actually, I, I think you said it well, and nothing, nothing to add. Thank you.
Thank you, Selectman Anderson. Selectman Harrington?
I totally agree, Mr. Chair. What, very well said. The only thing I would add is, there's also a misconception that the project is affordable, you know, it's affordable housing, and you know, it just needs to be explained that this, I mean, quite frankly, there's nothing going to be affordable about it, based off the water, the infrastructure, and the density of it for sewage, just, I, I think there's a misconception amongst numerous people locally, most of what it really is.
Okay, thank you for that. And Selectwoman Rouse?
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. Just a question, no venue then set for April thirtieth yet?
Kevin?
No, nothing as of yet, definitively.
Okay.
I'll put it on that down in the next day or two, waiting on some responses.
Okay, so our goal will be, once we determine that and it's solidified, we will then put out on social media, location, date, time, so residents can attend. And we strongly encourage residents to attend to become well-informed of this information. The second piece I just want to add into Mr. Vice Chair's comments are, we are working with Cape Anne Political Action Committee that has been very active in the state, going to different towns and presenting misand truce related to the MBTA with a legal perspective on it as well. They most recently this week were in Shrewsbury. So they're making their ways to different towns as they prepare these towns to go to vote and again, educating residents. We're trying to nail down a date for that sometime in May. And once we know that too, we will be sending that notification out on social media so residents can attend that information session as well.
And I'd just like to thank Selectwoman Rouse, who's taken the bull by the horns with that initiative and has done a tremendous amount of work and research. So thank you for that. And so is that anything, Kevin, do you have anything else to add before we move on? I mean, there's no vote, obviously. We just, we're just updating each other.
Correct, yeah, Mr. Chair. Just to add to that, absolutely, from my public relations piece, we'll do everything we can to get the message out, the word out through all of the same outlet, social media, website, et cetera. Get those out through the, those that have signed up on the website. Once we lock that down in, we'll do some infographics and try to get residents. It's a good point because depending on which venue ends up being available, there's likely not going to be an option for a hybrid format. You know, perhaps Cable Eight may be able to attend and record it or something of the discussion, which would be after the fact. So we certainly want to make sure residents are aware of the event location and the fact that they want to attend live in person, which is likely going to be the case, given the audiovisual options in the limited space based on the number that we're anticipating amongst all the committee members as well as department heads and the like. So we certainly will get that message out and discuss further. And we have a meeting, myself and Amanda, a meeting with with the town planner, Rachel Benson, tomorrow afternoon to discuss further a little bit on the planning board aspects and, you know, continuing to, you know, make sure that the meeting expectations are laid out and what we're looking for. So hopefully to work towards a meeting that's a productive for everybody to be involved, provide input, and move us forward on this path.
Great. Thank you, everyone, for the hard work. I know there's a lot of hard work going into this and I'm sure the voters and our constituents appreciate that. So moving on, it looks like tab number eight is a discussion of the FY two thousand twenty-five budget proposal. I'm gonna turn that over to Tom Manager Kevin Sweet.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, kind of sort of eight, eight and, or nine and ten, rather, roll into each other, kind of one of the same. At this time, I'm happy to answer any questions that the board has had. Hopefully, they've had some time to digest the budget document that's presented. Again, I think the budget that you have is a balanced budget. It's a fiscally sound and conservative budget that continues to maintain at a minimum, the services that the town's provided. There's some a number of areas that are, you know, non-discretionary as far as fixed costs and the like that have to be addressed. There's a couple of small areas or opportunities that we're able to pick up a little bit of growth. Obviously, we've cut out about a million dollars or so in requests as is common in every fiscal year. There's always a lot of demands and needs that are identified. And unfortunately, particularly, you know, in Massachusetts, living under Prop two and a half and the restrictions on what we're allowed to increase, there's only so much, so much of a bucket that can go around. So I think at the minimum, I think the budget, as I said, is, you know, as I mentioned before, the elementary school, seeing the largest percentage increase that they've seen in over five years. A number of other areas that just continuing to climb. And I think what has been presented to you is, is one that is is a good budget for us. There's a good increase, a good budget. I mean, I think there's, you know, there's a number of department heads that some are, you know, looking for some growth opportunities, such budget priorities and availability just isn't there. We've tried to make the best we can with what we have and unfortunately, Mike King, our finance director, is under the weather this evening and not feeling well. So he wasn't able to join us. But we've spent a lot of time really, over the last few months, reviewing requests, having discussions, really putting a lot of work and effort into what we hope will be a GFOA distinctive budget award as we hope to apply for. I think it's a, it certainly is the most comprehensive budget this board and this town has ever seen as far as the level of effort, the level of details that are in there. And I think, you know, some, one that I'm proud of and I know the finance team is as well. And, you know, certainly is something that there's, there's been a lot of, a lot of man-hours that have gone into and producing the product that you have before you. So again, I'm happy to answer any questions and that the board may have. Open to discussing any, anything there. Obviously, as I said, you know, I know Selectman Harrington, a couple of you have identified areas. We'd like to try to continue to look at potentially this budget, future budgets, you know, and where we can, we can try to increase some staffing and focus our areas. And we try to do that. Unfortunately, like every year, it's, it's been incremental and, you know, new things come out. This year, we were able to tackle minimally where we could because we were able to realize some benefits that, you know, some of which were tactful in decisions in prior fiscal years that have allowed us to give us a little bit of flexibility. Some of it, to be honest, is a little bit of luck on where, where we, where we land. And I say that on the things that we don't really have much control over, like the KP budget assessment and a couple of those other areas that, you know, that formula every year. As you know, I've talked about being able to do budget forecasting and that KP on the education budget impacts is a significant portion of the town's budget. And as always, every single year and unknown. And it's very difficult to do any type of budget forecasting and really know what our impact was going to be. So this year, we received a favorable assessment as far as percentage increase. And, you know, I don't, I'm not naive to think that we're going to be lucky to be able to receive such an increase in future. The last two fiscal years, FY twenty-four and FY twenty-five have been pretty favorable for rent them as far as year-over-year increase. But, you know, we've known for the last over five, the complete opposite and even going back to Selectman Anderson's history, you know, with the police department, twenty eighteen was a real calendar twenty eighteen was a, was a major impact, a hit that we've had where we had to go back to special town meeting and make some cuts. So it's, it's a challenging operation, particularly because of the unique uniqueness of the regional school aspect. But again, I think the budget is, is a sound budget and one that I think we can, we can be proud of to move forward.
Okay, thank you. At this time, I'm gonna open it up to the select, to the board members to see if anyone has any questions or comments. I'm gonna start with Select, Selectman Anderson.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. Yeah, so Kevin, first of all, I had an opportunity to review that budget book. And I gotta say, there was a lot of good information in there. It was very easy to read. So I, I wanted to give you and your, your team some kudos on that. The only question I do have is, I know we're spending one point three million with free cash. Now, what does that leave for free cash as a balance going forward?
This year, we had a significant amount of, and that's actually in the budget book, the balance. I can pull that up for you. One sec, let me just.
Yeah, I, I think it was like, we had seven million in free cash.
Yes, correct. A big portion of that was the sale of the Mar property, the one-
Right.
Deal. And, yeah, we're, we're in a great position this year with available free cash even after the usage for the budget balancing. We also, which you are not aware of, because I just received notice of, we did receive a significant release of the overlay from the Board of Assessors, which I plan to share as part of our recommendations for our next meeting related to free cash utilization on capital projects and some other items. So we'll have a lot of discussion on that at our next meeting, the first meeting in May, in that memo with recommendations on utilization of that. So the it's, locally, billable funds, I think I have it right here. So free cash ATM increase was about, yeah, it leaves us about five point five. So the actual amount that was beginning seven one of twenty-three was just over seven point three million. So we're in, we're extremely healthy, the most we've seen. Certainly anything that I could trace back as far as a free cash number. Again, as you know, a big portion of that was the Mar property. But even if you pull, if you pull that out, we still have a significant amount at over four million, which is, you know, above historic averages. So we're, we're doing really financially in that, in that aspect.
Okay, it's good.
Publish a number of capital things that are priorities and continue to work towards some of the policies and goals that we have with saving to reduce the amount of future borrowing and capital costs that we know, that we're aware of.
Yeah, thanks, Kevin. It's good to know the town's in good financial health. Thank you.
Selectman Harrington?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So yeah, Kevin, kudos to your team that, that I spent a lot of time going through the, the presentation that you sent to us, extremely comprehensive. I mean, every, everything that you could think to ask was basically answered in, without question. FinCom, I assume, has gone through the, the different articles. And other than that, great job. I appreciate all the hard work and Mike and did a great job.
Thank you, Selectman Harrington. I appreciate that feedback. Yes, Finance Committee will be receiving this as been, as has been in practice, once the board votes to adopt it. We have a couple of meetings that are already scheduled. We will discuss this, including the meeting of the Finance Public Hearing, particularly on the budget as well. That, that's all been scheduled with the Finance Committee. And look forward to those discussions, comments and review with them as in their role as an advisory capacity. Absolutely.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay, Selectwoman Rouse?
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. I'll just echo my fellow board members' comments in terms of, you know, very comprehensive budget review and pulling the balance budget together, especially with the rise of expenses and requests that have come into the town. I know that's not an easy, easy task to do. So I had no further questions on the information that was provided. It was very very thorough and detailed. So thank you for that.
Okay, and I will just add, my comments are basically mirroring and echoing the board. It's a fiscally responsible budget. A lot of work went into it, tons of detail. I'm very happy that we're using less free cash year-over-year. We're constantly moving in the right direction. We're making investments into our infrastructure, which is, you know, has always been something that's important to me and the board. You know, putting more money towards our roads and our other infrastructure needs, which is great. And we even have, you know, been able to, you know, if, I think we, I think I read this and we went over this. We're even able to make some public, public safety addition to staffing, correct?
That's correct.
Yeah, so.
So one additional officer is proposed in the FY twenty-five budget. You know, when I set out, I've been six and a half years ago, recently after appointing Chief McGrath, you know, he's had a, he's had a goal of, I think, ideally, on a perfect world, in addition of six officers, he'd like to get, you know, four to six. Again, we've been able to in the last, including last fiscal year and this year, add two more additional officers, which is more than the community has done in the twenty-five years prior. As far as, as far as the complement of sworn officers and certainly we all agree and know that the community has grown significantly drastically in the last couple of decades and the demand on public safety as many departments has grown. But it doesn't get, get in the full staffing level that, you know, he'd like to be at. But neither, again, as I've said, neither are many of the departments where, you know, where they like to be. But we, we are able to in this, in this budget, add an additional officer, which is long overdue and long needed.
Yep. Yeah, I'll just say I'm proud of this budget. I'm proud of the work that your team did. And I'm very happy to have a conversation with any residents regarding this budget. So thank you for all your hard work, Kevin and team. Please let the team know the select board is very appreciative of all the hard work. Okay, at this time, it looks like tab number nine, we're going to vote to adopt the FY two thousand twenty-five budget. So I guess what I'll do at this time is just, I will ask for a motion to adopt the fiscal year twenty twenty-five budget.
So moved.
Okay, so I have a motion made by Selectman Anderson, a second by Selectman Harrington. Any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll go to roll call vote. Selectman Anderson?
Anderson, yes.
Selectman Harrington?
Harrington, yes.
Selectwoman Rouse?
Rouse, yes.
And Gallo's a yes. Motion carries four zero. Okay, tab ten. Looks like we have June third town meeting warrant update. Jeff, June, June third, twenty twenty-four annual town meeting warrant. Kevin, is, is the purpose of this, do, do we want to go through these articles? Are they still in progress?
Yeah, so they are being, obviously, still under legal review and some I need, do need to clean up a couple of areas just. The intent behind this is really for the board to see what's been submitted and kind of go through if there's anything that stands out, that's clarified that they want to request a particular board or representative to speak on further in our next meeting before the actual adoption of the warrant. So as far as the, the content of it, it's not going to change with the exception exception of two items that I have. That's, this will be essentially what you're seeing. Some of the language might vary. But essentially, the requested articles are before you. So in the past, what we've done is we've kind of gone through each article and asked if there's any ones in particular that board members have questions or concerns. Obviously, this being our annual town meeting, most of these are nothing new. A lot of these are simple articles, but there are some additions that are presented that might be looking for further clarification on and, you know, might have some questions. I do see our principal assessor, Rob Scott, is on as well. And, you know, if there's anything that perhaps on the Board of Assessors articles that were submitted or if anything else, I can certainly try to, try to do my part in answering. But I think most of them, what you'll find, most of them is, are pretty straightforward. And as I said, as it relates to the capital and the specifics around those those articles related to the capital budget, we'll have that discussion at our next meeting for the first meeting in May with regards to what items we're looking for and with that, which includes a request to the school superintendent, Dr. Cameron, with some requests that they have that are specific for the elementary school.
Okay, so does it, I think this is typically the meeting where we would read the articles, right? And then if someone wants to hold, someone would say hold and then we would go back and discuss them further? Is that what the intent, is that what is typically what we would do right now?
Yes, correct. That's what we've done the best.
All right, here we go then. Following tradition, I'll start. I'm gonna read all the articles. I'll give you a second to say hold. If you want me to hold one, we'll put a hold on it and then we'll come back and dive in. Article one. Article two. Article three. Article four. Article five. Article six. Article eight. Article, is that X or Roman numeral ten?
Yeah, so those are still getting reworked on the alignment of where they'll be. So the, the article numbers are just for discussion purposes.
Still, I just don't want anyone to think that I don't know my alphabet or numerics. Article X, Water System Improvements. Article nine, Stabilization. Article ten, Other Post-Employment Benefits. Article eleven, Establishment Animal Control Revolving Account. Article twelve, Revolving Fund Expenditures. Article fifteen, Community Preservation Act. And do I have to read all these sub-articles? And do I have to read all these subarticles about the, uh, I'm sorry, uh?
The headers.
Okay. Article XX, Delaney Elementary School Playground Construction. Article XX, ADA compliant automatic doors. Metacomic Greenway Engineering Design Study. Uh, Senior Living Communities.
Uh, uh, hold.
Okay, SLC. Okay, um. Uh, tree mitigation funds. Adjusted asset limit for clause. Adjusted income and asset limits for clause. Forty one C. Senior Tax Work Off Program Exce- Exemption Limit. Senior Tax Work Off Program Angel Provision. Citizen Petition. And that, uh, that. Finalizes the list. So it looks like the only hold we had was on the SLC, Senior Living Community. Under the uh CPA. Header. If I'm not mistaken. So Kevin, can you speak to that or who who can speak to that for Selectwoman Rouse and for Selectwoman Rouse, please feel free to?
Yeah, I just wanted more, I wanted just clarification as to the reason why it was added and what is it uh? Just regulations or can you just give a little bit more insight on that?
Yeah, not, not to put Rachel on the spot, um, our planning director is on, I think still perhaps maybe she could, she's available, could add some content to. This is a planning board. Um, sponsored article. And um, I don't definitely know what was driving it. Hey, Rachel.
Hi, Rachel. Welcome. Do you, can we, uh, do you want us to re-ask the question?
Um, no, I think I got it. I was listening.
Gotcha.
Uh, so this is just in light of the most recent senior living community um projects that have come through. The planning board thought that they could tighten up the existing language of the Senior Living Community Bylaw. Um, which is great, um. Instead of waiting for twenty years to update a bylaw, always enjoy doing it right while the iron is hot. So that's pretty much um of. What this is, just to be a bit, a little bit more reflective of what uh the planning board wants to see. And therefore makes it um easier for a developer when they come in um to uh submit a plan that meets those standards.
Just curious, Rachel, are there, are there blaring differences from what is required now versus what's been added here? Because it's, it just seems to be a lot of information, just trying to understand it.
Yeah, sure. Um, some of it is wording, um, you know, just because words matter. Um, including, you know, uh, calculation as to what percentage of the lot can be um wetlands. Uh, putting a word for adequate public water, not just public water. Um, including, you know, sort of setbacks and where those setbacks are taken from. Um, including a little bit, uh, some parking requirements for the amenity structure. Um, where they want sidewalks and then their preference of where they want sidewalks. Um, and then changing DHCD because that's, doesn't exist anymore. Now the housing of liberal communities. Um, and also, uh, you know, including a little bit more uh language around, um. You know, this amen, the amenity structure and uh what that needs to meet. As well. And that's about what it is in a nutshell.
Rachel, is it, is it a fair uh comment that this came, uh, a lot of this came from feedback from the uh? Senior Living Community that was presented in West Rantham, some of the learnings and findings from both the residents and the board?
I wasn't calling out them by name, but yes, that's what I, um, when I led, I said, as a response to some senior living communities that have been presented. But if you want to call them out by name, yes, the Sheldonville Projects.
I mean, I have no issue. I mean, it's, I think that, I think a lot of this stuff is fantastic and it came as a direct result of. The pro- the public, you know, uh, uh, reaction or input based on it, and I commend the planning board yourself. Uh, for working with these residents and everyone to, you know, make sure that this thing is as tight as possible so that we're getting a. Good product that we're proud of, that's going to provide great amenities for the seniors, uh, you know, uh. That we're building them for and that, you know, everyone's being set up, set up for success. So I didn't mean to call anyone out by, in a negative way. I was trying to be very positive because I think it's um. I I'm very impressed that, that, uh, you know, uh, the feedback and now the changes that I'm seeing here because I followed it very closely. So, uh, please share our um, uh, appreciation to you and your, and the planning boards. We very much appreciate it.
Will do. Thank you.
Does that answer all your questions?
It does. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Um, with that being said, uh, any further discussion on town warrant article idols, uh, article items before we move forward?
Ms. Chair, um, yes, thank you, Rachel, for jumping in. I appreciate that. Um, I do, as I stated at the beginning, there are two articles that you. Do not have before you that did not make this edition. It just kind of got, uh, that got wrapped up. Um, one is a request, as you saw from Greg Ennis, uh, with regards to the clerical union that that has progressed, um. Rather somewhat rapidly, um, in a good way. And I think we're going to be ready to actually have an article on the warrant, um, that was drafted. I just don't think it made it into the actual document. Um, with regards to approval of the funding for the clerical union. Um, as I hope the board will be in a position to ratify um that tentative agreement we have now. Um, again, standard language as you typically see, uh, with regards to just the funding. Um, and the approval of of the clerical union contract. Uh, the other one is a request that came in that, uh, we received. From the King Philip, uh, business manager Larry Azar. Um, that was a request, I guess they, they'd sent it in in. March, they said, but we, none of us actually received it, but he just followed up to clarify, we have the article and the language. What they're looking to do is to place on the warrant. And vote to authorize a KP Regional School District to establish a capital stabilization fund. Uh, for the KP School District, um. Which would allow them to create a mechanism by which the district can save funds. For upcoming capital projects such as upgrade replacement of a high school stadium. Turf field and track as well as the high school tennis courts. Establishing this fund would help to offset, offset any financial contributions. Needed from the member towns to finance such projects. Um, seems reasonable to me. I think it's a prudent, um. Financial law. Decision as far as saving for, you you know, known costs and a capital stabilization fund is one for those. I haven't had any. Full real detail. I do intend to meet with uh the school superintendent and Larry and I assume. Um, and I have not confirmed this with my other two colleagues, but they have the same article, um. With both Norfolk and Plainville requesting the approval, as I believe similar to the budget. Would require to, both two communities out of the three to approve. The article for such. Um, my guess is they're looking to put uh excess and deficiency or E and D. Um, possibly some of those funds uh into the capital stabilization to build up. A capital stabilization account for, as I said, future, um, future anticipated or known, um. Capital related costs that are going to be coming up. Um, similar to ours, it doesn't define a specific capital item. Uh, but it is used for capital as a determined, uh, by capital. We, we've talked about how some, some communities have a specific road stabilization fund. Our capital stabilization fund, similar to this, would allow us for discretionary use of that for capital purposes, so. Um, they obviously noted a couple of projects that they are anticipating, uh, coming forward at some point. Um, so I look, I will be having those conversations with school leadership there, but. Um, I think it's a pretty straightforward article request and um, not one that seems to be too concerning from, from my purview.
Okay, I, and I will say this, it looks like I forgot one, so I apologize to the board. I forgot to say, I think I forgot to say. Um, the citizen petition article and the moderator would be very upset with me, uh, to see that the town will vote to authorize the board. To file a home rule petition, uh, with the great court amending chapter one sixteen. Uh, by deleting the current section, there shall be a town moderator elected for one term, one year term and replacing it. There should be a town moderator elected for three years. So I apologize if I um missed that one. Does anyone want to talk about that before we move on? Okay, so with that being said, I think that concludes our uh warrant article discussion. At this time, it looks like the only thing left on our agenda is tab eleven, the town managers report. At this time, Kev, I hand it over to you.
Thank you, Ms. Chair. Just a few updates. Um, the Human Resources Office has been very busy the last uh. Couple of months with uh hiring and recruitment. Um, we've filled uh positions with Br- uh Brandy Fleming as a DPW Administrative Assistant. Who started on April eighth in the DPW, uh, Ren O'Brien, a library technician, uh, who started April tenth. And Nick Richard, uh, our new finance office assistant, uh, who started actually today on April sixteenth. Uh, these are positions that due to, and DPW was retirement. Um, and some in internal promotions and some other folks that uh have taken other opportunities. So we've been busy, uh. On the recruitment end, um, the last couple of months in interviews and in selecting candidates. Uh, open enrollment begin, uh, begins on April eighteenth and runs through May fifteenth for town employees. Uh, this is for a start date of July first, twenty twenty four. Um, and is tied in with uh the benefits fair and a number of other. Initiatives that happen during the open enrollment timeframe. Our benefits fair is on April twenty fourth, uh, at the senior center from twelve to four. Um, number of. Vendors have been um. Signed up and will be attending. This is always a tough, uh, tough time and date to kind of identify and locate because obviously. Largest employees do belong to the elementary school district and trying to make sure that we have a time slot and an opportunity for. Uh, teachers and staff to be able to make sure that they're able to get over and attend, uh, the benefits fair and and get questions answered about. Um, not just health plans, but a number of other offerings for employee benefits that, um, uh, including retirement and. Um, and the like, so. That is April twenty fourth at the senior center from twelve to four. Uh, we've also had uh pre-enrollment meetings with Boston Mutual. Uh, for our life insurance with both police, fire and DPW departments. We'll be hosting them this Wednesday on April seventeenth at Town Hall to capture. Other departments, including Town Hall staff, recreation, library facilities. Um, senior center and and, uh, you know, in the building as a whole. Again, trying to uh have those conversations with our provider, Boston Mutual, and it's been a number of years since uh we've had somebody else to speak to the benefits that are offered there. Uh, many of which are employee options, um, that, you know, that are allowed to. Uh, pick up plans for additional uh coverages at at their sole discretion. On the water master plan, I think we're going to be at a position where hopefully. At a next couple of meetings, being able to have Chuck Adamsberger. Um, and Brian Antonoli come in and present to us the status of the uh Rantham Well Exploration and. I know you're, the board's aware of some, um, particularly. Further exploration that's being conducted or had been being conducted over a number of weeks out in the West End in a particular parcel. Um, that we're looking at, um, potentially, we've really exhausted, uh, a lot of effort over the last. Year and a half, um, really looking at through our environmental partners, through our water engineer on identifying. Locations and, you know, we're really kind of left to this one parcel that is uh really the only one that looks like will be favorable. Um, and we'll, we'll look to have uh Chuck and his team present on where things stand with that. And potentially, um, you know, next steps to kind of move forward. Um, lot of work, a lot of effort going on there. Uh, we continue to request and ask for grant funding. Um, opportunities, we put, I submitted a request uh to both. Uh, the Senator and State Rep Bond, um, looking for additional. Um, funding through the state budget process, through earmarks as we have in prior years. We did receive the um federal grant. We're still awaiting on direction and next steps for just that, uh, just under a million dollars there. For water system improvements, which was a, a big, um, a big win, uh, for us to receive. And continue to look for opportunities so that we're not putting, uh, the burden, um, as you know, the water capital plan calls for six million plus. Uh, in water system costs, um, related to particularly heavily focused on the West End. Uh, with citing a new well and looking at interconnections and a number of things, so. Anything we can do to reduce the costs on our ratepayers, um, we continue to look for. Um, but it's coming together, as you know, it's a five to seven year. Um, plan that was laid out and um we've making some good headway and. They're having some preliminary reviews and conversations with DEP, ultimately who's the permitting authority to kind of. See if some of the uh potential concepts that we're looking at, um, would be approved by them and um having those conversations, so. I would anticipate in the next meeting or two, um, possibly out into early June. At the latest, we should be able to get an update on where things stand, uh, through the, through our team related to that. Um, the only other thing I had, uh, as an item, um. Was. The. We got the water mask plan. I had another thing that I wanted to. Oh, okay, uh, Sweat Park, um, Sweat Park, we're hoping to get that bid document out, um, no later than the end of this month. Uh, it's. Created a little bit of delay in what was originally anticipated. Our engineering team. Um, which is VHB, who's doing the design and assisting us with the bid document. Uh, wanted to go and do some further exploratory to, which is a good idea. Um, to do soil testing and do some observation holes to make sure, particularly in the court area. Um, to plan for any, any type of. Concerns or soil related things as, um, they look at it, at citing the court and future settling and some of those. Issues that potentially could arise. So we've uh moved forward and progressed in looking at those. We've had some. Uh, conversations, a number of com- calls and conversations, reviews with the engineering team. Greg and I have a call with VHB, uh, tomorrow afternoon to finalize and we're hoping to get. As they work on concluding the bid document, which as you know, is extremely complex and an area that we need to be extremely diligent on. Um, much like we went re- through recently with the uh parking lot and making sure that the drawings and the specs are are really detailed. And really, uh, ensure that things are there. One thing I do want to mention is that. There's a good, a likely chance potential that, um. The bid documents could, you know, know over the next week or so as we look at this a little bit closer. Um, with projected costs will be potentially more than what we have available to us. Uh, with regards to ARPA funds based on where. A VHB is anticipating to, to that point. There is a, about a twenty, I think they're holding a twenty percent, twenty-five percent contingency in that number. Uh, but we won't actually know, unfortunately, we can't. You know, it's contingent upon funding, but it's also timing on when we're able to secure funding and we won't know that to. And we're also looking at trying to go back and request some additional funds through the county. Which is unknown whether or not there is available funds, whether or not we would even. Be able to get approved and have that funding. On a worst case scenario, there's a potential of, um, you know, three, four hundred thousand. Of a potential gap if they, if pricing comes in where they're at and if contingency isn't utilized, so. We may have to have some additional conversation potentially at our next meeting. Um, around options related to that. Um, as you know, this entire project, including the engineering design work. Um, has cost the local taxpayers nothing, um, this, uh, to, to this, you know, to this stage, but. Um, based on. You know, preliminary estimates, I think we're probably going to be short. Our first option, uh, ideal option will be looking to go back to the county and see if we can get some additional funding. Um, if not, we would have to look at, um, potentially some additional. Um, town support related to being able to see the full fruition. The benefit of that is if bids come in less, more competitive, we don't have contingencies that are utilized. Um, obviously, if there's any money that's appropriated, that anything that is unspent would get closed out and turned back. To the town's coffers, but we really need to. And on the, again, it's a little preliminary, but once I know really what they're estimating. Have those, that money secured so that we can at least award it, move the project forward and and make sure that we're on top of the projects and ideally. Um, not have to spend all of it or, you know, depending on where things land, so, um. Yeah, I, I don't think it's, it's a huge shock based on. The design and estimates, uh, as you know, there was some preliminary work that was done with a prior engineer that seemed to be on the low end. Uh, but for this particular project, the funding we've received was the full amount that we've asked for. So what we would be, what we would be doing is going back and asking for an additional amount above and beyond what we already had available to us and, um. You know, I'm not. Uh, I, I'm not discounting that. I think there's some potential opportunity there. It's just going to take, um, evolve over the next couple of weeks to try to identify and and see if that's an option. Um, but nonetheless, I think even if, if, uh. There does have to be a nominal contribution from, you know, the town's portion. I think we're going to see. A major investment into the downtown in addition to the parking lot. Um, that is coming out of, uh, you know, these grant funds that are not, um, have not impacted our. You know, our Rantham uh taxpayers directly as far as local tax contributions. And, um, I think this is an investment that's long overdue. And, um, I think this is an investment that's long overdue. Um, to revitalize and re-energize, um, Sweat Park, and much like we've seen with the. Improvements to the center of school lot, but ideally that wouldn't be my first choice and that, you know, we're going to try to. Uh, tackle other oper- options to, uh, fund it fully, but, um. I just sharing that now because it's, there's potentially a good likelihood that that may not get us all the way there.
Okay, uh, appreciate that update, Kevin. Sweat Park, please keep us posted and then obviously. We'll have to, um, you know, reconvene and see what our options are. I, I do have one question. And then I'll see if the board members have any other questions for you. Regarding Sweat Park, I know I've asked this before, has, have we been in touch with, um, Malia's family? Um, regarding. Either of the bench design or if we decided on that, what that was going to look like. I know there was some conversation on. You know, what it looked like, what we were doing. Do you have any updates for us on that? Do we have anything? To look at in the near future or any, uh, you know, feedback from her family?
Yeah, we've, uh, we've absolutely been having the conversations, um, they've come in, they presented some stuff, um. I did, we've kind of asked them to go back and and, you know, relook at some of it to make sure that it fits the, uh. I guess the theme, if you will, or, you know, sort of the, uh, you know, what. What Sweat Park kind of the look and feel that we're looking to, uh, have down there. Um, we've asked them to kind of reconsider. I think they really want to move forward with some sort of, um. Commemorative bench, um, and we've asked them to kind of relook at some designs that potentially could fit. Um, more within the design of Sweat Park as a whole. Uh, but those, that dialogue has been ongoing, has been, they, we've had them in. Um, and we continue to share back and forth, um, discussions. I, I think locking the specifics of that in has, is right now has been a little bit less, um. Definitive or necessary. What we, we have done is we have allocated specifically a location within the design. Um, that would accommodate it. So, you know, as, as the park. Progresses over the next several months, those details of what that final. Um, piece would look like, you know, can be worked out, but the location in the area. Has been identified on the plan and kind of accounted for, um, to be able to accommodate for it.
That's great. Okay, appreciate that. Uh, at this time, I'm gonna see if, uh, any of the other board members have any questions for you, Kevin, regarding this or anything else.
Absolutely.
Solid, select Mananison?
Uh, no questions, Mr. Vice Chair.
Uh, Selectman Harrington.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. Uh, Kevin, would, if necessary, would that be something CPC could pay for with Sweat Park?
Yeah, that, I mean, that was one of my first thoughts. The problem is just timing, um. I think what's going to end up happening is if we don't get this because we've missed the window. For what we're hoping is going to be the construction season. And the best benefit is probably going to be looking at an allocation at this town meeting in order for me to be able to. Say that the funds are, are committed, um, either and being able to sign a contract, I have to have appropriated funds and be able to have the funds available. So. I, that would be a- absolutely, the usage could be used. Uh, but the timing of it is just not going to be favorable with, and and I think. You know, Greg and I have talked about this and I think the cost of demobilizing and bringing back. To wait for something like that as opposed to kind of a doing it as a full award. And looking at where those bids come in, um, those costs for ramping up and de- demobilizing. Um, you're gonna end up paying that premium. So I think, um, it's probably not going to.
Right.
Lucian, if we want to move forward with the full design.
Right, but you could, you could appropriate the funds and then go for a fall town meeting to. Pay it. Backwards from CPC, correct?
Um.
You'd say, say hypothetically, you could.
Reimburse it back its allocation from, call it free cash.
Free cash.
Yeah, yeah, we could, you know, we could look at it. It would be a, it would be a sizable impact to CPC. Someone doing them as well. But, yeah, I mean, I ideally parks. The like playground. I mean, this certainly is a, uh. Is a, you know, is a, is a good use of CPC funds. Um, you know, and one that we have considered for many years. But even just doing something on a small scale, whether it just be redoing the court that was the existing court, um. But we can look at those options. I think this is, we're fortunate that this is the year that we have. Some good capital funding available to us and, um. You know, we, we do have good free cash, uh, available. We do have overlay. Uh, surplus that's been released. So we, we do have some options. Again, that will be last case utilization of town funds. I just from the, as a chief procurement officer in, in ex- executing the contract. The funds have to be appropriated. I need to be able to know that those funds. Um, they'll, they actually have those. I can't, I can't sign a contract speculating on future. Um, commitment.
I'm, I'm sure, yeah. Yeah.
Um, and we, and we don't want to miss, um, I think we want to do it as a project and we don't want to miss this construction season.
Right. Agreed, agreed.
Okay, Select. Rouse.
No further questions. Thank you.
Okay, if, uh, if that's it with the agenda, I think, uh. I'm gonna turn it over to Selectman Anderson.
Mr. Vice Chair, with your permission, uh, motion to adjourn.
Second that.
We had a motion to adjourn by Selectman Anderson, a second by Selectwoman Rouse. Seeing no further discussion, we'll take a roll call vote. Selectman Anderson?
Anderson's a yes.
Selectman Harrington?
Harrington, yes.
Selectwoman Rouse?
Rouse is a yes, thank you.
Gallo's a yes. Motion to adjourn passes. Thanks, everybody.
Have a great night.
But I, I forgot, it's outside of the meeting, obviously, at this point, but just a reminder. Um, you will receive this week a notice of, uh, an appointment of acting. Town managers that will be out of the country, as you know, Friday. Um, returning and have limited access, uh, to anything. So I just wanted to make sure. But you'll, um, receive formal notification of that as well and, uh, it'll be in good hands.
Thank you, Greg. Get ready. We're gonna have, we're gonna have an emergency meeting just to test the waters.
I already at least one, maybe two.
Kevin, enjoy your time. Make sure your, uh, availability is very limited. You deserve it. Have fun and, um.
For sure. Have a good night. Good idea.
Thank you.
Good night.
Good night.